Well, we'll call our work session to order. Before we begin with the agenda, I'll point out that Mayor Moe and Councilwoman Nicholas are both excused. They're representing the city at another event. First agenda item is consideration of a recommendation to award laundry dry cleaning service contract for the Laurel Police Department. Chief?
Good evening. How is everybody?
Good.
Before you should have a memo memorandum dated May 22, 2013. On April 25, 2013, an invitation for bid for laundry and dry cleaning services was issued to eight local vendors and advertised in the Laurel Leader newspaper. On May 17, one bid was received and opened by Lisa Woods of Finance and Ruth Hyatt of the Police Department with Montgomery Cleaners in the amount of $45,417. Attached to the bid package distributed to the area vendors is a bid form listing the maximum number of items, and it's basically a worst-case scenario for dry cleaning, laundry, and/or repair during a one-month period. By doing this, it allows for the vendor to review the number of items that would require their services and price them accordingly. The FY 2014 police budget includes $27,000 in dry cleaning as a line item for this contract. In the interest of remaining fiscally responsible, the $27,000 budgeted for dry cleaning remains within the three-year history of this award. Although there's approximately an $18,000 difference, we remain comfortable this award will remain within the led or the assigned dollar figure of this line item. Therefore, it is recommended the award Montgomery Cleaners the dry cleaning and laundry service for the fiscal year of 2014.
Thank you, Chief McGlockman. Counsel, questions? We'll start with Councilman Ricks.
I agree with what the chief selected here. I know the people. I've seen the business, and I see the care that they give to the product. So therefore, I totally agree with you.
Councilman Les?
I'll note that Montgomery Cleaners is in part of Laurel on Montgomery Street, and I'm good with this.
Councilwoman McQuarrie?
Explain to me again why we're comfortable with $18,000 difference?
That's a worst-case scenario. We have never exceeded our line item. We just do worst-case scenarios so that they can actually project based on factual numbers.
They do that, okay.
Yeah, and included in our dry cleaning, which is a newer item, is we included the wool blankets that are in the cell block that we had to piecemeal out. So there's a lot more items that are included in this item, but we have, or this list that we haven't included in the past, but we have never exceeded our line item.
Okay. I'm okay with this.
Thank you. And I guess I'll note that Montgomery Cleaners has provided this service to our police department for a number of years, and so I think we've gotten very good service from the measure stated, chief. I'm fine with this as well, so this will be on our agenda for the 10th?
I will note, too, that's another reason why their service is so good that they actually have a lot of Prince George County police officers take care of this here and there.
Well, actually, if I may, a lot of agencies piggyback on us, not so much on our costs, but our recommendation. There's a lot of agencies, both federal and local, that utilize Montgomery Cleaners now as a result of us using them. We have an outstanding history with them. We've never had, we've had very few complaints.
Good. Good. Consideration of a recommendation to award police uniform contract, again, the Laurel Police Department?
Before you should have a memorandum dated April 10. And on November 1, 2012, an invitation to bid for police uniforms was mailed to five vendors and advertised in the Laurel Leader newspaper. On December 17, 2012, sorry, two bids were received and reviewed and opened by Andrea Pickett of Finance and Charles Booker, the property custodian and quarter master of the Police Department. The results were as follows. FFNA Jacobs &amp; Sons, $54,332.75. Hyatt &amp; Company, $60,273.50. Included in the bid package distributed each vendor was a bid form listing specific clothing items to be purchased by the Laurel Police Department. In the police budget for fiscal year 2014, $53,749 has been allocated for uniform purchases as a line item for this contract. Again, we've utilized FFNA in the past. They can provide our product without any substitution and quickly, with a very quick turnaround, and it is my recommendation that we award FFNA Jacobs the uniform bid for the Laurel Police Department for fiscal year 2014.
Thank you, chief. I will start with questions, comments. Councilman Les? Councilwoman McQuarrie? And Councilman Ricks?
I am fine as well.
Mr. President, if I may, just a sidebar or an update. Per your request, you requested a gun buyback program be initiated and started. On behalf of the City of Laurel, the Police Department has entered into a partnership with the Church of, I'm sorry, the New Life Church of Christ of Montgomery Street, which is Devon Hebron, and his church is very supportive of it. They're actually involved. They're very excited about doing a partnership. We have scheduled a buyback for June 29 between the hours of 9:00 and 1:00 at the Armory. We'd like your involvement if you're available. And we have located funding which does not put any, has no impact on our city budget. It is from the federal asset forfeiture, and it is permissible by law, and we are in the process of purchasing $5,000 of $50 gift cards.
Excellent. Now, chief, would you just tell us how, what are your plans to publicize this event?
With the church being notified, they're going to do their thing through the Sunday service, and they're going to do some foot, some foot traffic. We're going to notify the NAACP and let them put it out. We also notify Prince George's County. Prince George's County ironically has one scheduled for the 22nd down in C Pleasant, so they're going to use theirs as a spinoff in the event that they run out of money, or use ours as a spinoff in the event that they run out of money. Going to work with Pete Parenter to do some PR work and get it, get it out to the papers and get it publicized, and we'll also use the variable message boards.
Perfect. Counsel, any comments or questions?
Nope, just tickled to hear it. That was a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, chief. Agenda item three is a consideration of a recommendation to extend contract LA 1-13-01, NCI Construction Corporation. Good evening, Mr. McCullough.
Good evening, Mr. President. Councilmembers, the memorandum we have dated June 5, subject extension of contract LA 13-01, NCI Construction Corporation. We have currently working this contract. Most of the work is finished, but it still has a couple items that are still open. And because they're still working with the city on this contract, they've agreed to do some additional work if the council agrees to extend the contract on some deep patching and major repairs on some streets that currently need it. In the general operating budget, we have $70,000 for local works to do some street repair work that's unobligated at this point. That's the funding source.
That's the funding source that we are proposing to use for this extension, and we would do some, some deep patching that we don't really have the capability to do efficiently like NCI would. So we can actually get more bang for our buck by extending the NCI contract. Because they are doing this, they won't charge a mobilization, or if they get this additional work, they won't charge a mobilization fee, so again, it's cheaper than trying to do it on a separate contract. Because of that, it's recommended that the mayor and city council award a subject extension for contract LA 13-01 to NCI Construction Corporation out of Beltsville, Maryland in the amount of $70,000.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Councilwoman McQuarrie, comments, question? Councilman Ricks?
No, I totally agree. I think that we are doing now what we didn't do for years, and the police serves us well to do this kind of work, so I totally agree.
Councilman Les?
Fine with this, Mr. President.
I just have one question, Mr. McCullough, and it may be early, but have any streets or potential streets been identified? Not that you have to name them, but just?
Yes, they have. We, one of the, one of the streets is Mulberry, and we have, we actually are doing some testing on some of them because there's some concerns about a lot of the cracking. We've had a lot of heavy traffic over that in the past, and that will be one of the areas where we'll be doing some patching. On that particular area, we would only be doing the deep patching, and then that's scheduled to be paved as part of a contract that we propose to award early part of fiscal year 14. There are some other streets that we've identified that have some, some major repairs needing that we'll, on those, we'll do everything, including the deep patching, the milling, and the final overlay.
Great. Thank you. So we're ready to move on this Monday night. Agenda item four is consideration of a recommendation to extend contract LA 13-05, sidewalk replacement.
There's, there's a word change there that needs to be changed on your agenda item. It's not extend. It should be to award a contract.
Okay.
We currently do not have a contract for sidewalk work in the city. We have, we had a competitive bid, and the bids came in from, varying from $34,943 for Royal Construction out of Bowie, Maryland, to a high of $64,853 for a company in Dulles, Virginia. In, this is a CIP project. We have funding, so the funding source would be from, from the CIP in fiscal year 2013. It provides funding for sidewalk replacement, and we have identified sidewalks. We keep a running list of sidewalks that have, a lot of them have tripping hazards that need to be replaced. Some of them are repair by replacement. Occasionally, there's, we will put something in for a new sidewalk that where none exists. We, we got very good bids, a very good low bid. The variance there is about, is $30,000 almost for a significant reduction over the high bid. We estimated it would probably be about in the range of the $60,000. But Royal, I guess, was hungry. They needed, needed some work. We have experience with Royal, Royal Construction. The sidewalks that are along Cherry Lane were put in by Royal. They've done work for the city, and it's been satisfactory, so we're satisfied with the quality of the work that they have done for us. The mayor has, had asked me about a sidewalk in front of the Parks and Rec maintenance facility. I don't propose that, it's not included in this, but because it is such a low bid or comparative to the others, we may be able to come back with, with putting together another list for in addition to add to this before, before they finish. But right now, the recommendation is to award the bid to Royal Construction out of Bowie, Maryland for their low bid of $34,943, which we have checked out and are satisfied with.
Okay. Before I go to the council, Mr. McCullough, let me just ask you, in sidewalk replacement work, how, how does a contractor deal with portions of a sidewalk that have been pushed up by tree roots, you know, mature trees? How do you deal with that? Because obviously, just taking that out there, some?
We have, the way we've dealt with them in the past, we've, we've looked, we've removed the concrete. We'll take a look at the, the root system that's underneath that's causing the damage. If it's something that can be trimmed, we will do it. If it's something that will, and if we need to have an arborist take a look at the tree roots to verify whether it's safe to remove, to trim the roots back, we'll do that. If not, we have a couple of places that I, one particularly on Lafayette Avenue. We had a large tree, and we were concerned about the damage to the tree. We got permission from the owner of the property to give us a waiver to put part of the sidewalk around the tree on the opposite side of the curb, and, and that continued the sidewalk without doing any damage to the tree. That's generally an exception, and when we do that, we would get a, a waiver from the owner so that, because it is on, on a private property. Typically, we will, we have, in some places, actually, the sidewalk may be elevated a little bit, but it will be tapered so that it, it meets all the adjoining sections, and there won't be any tripping hazards. One of the areas that, that we have had a number of, of questions about some tripping, actually found some, and they, the homeowner there is quick to let us know as well of Oaks. We have identified several areas, so that would be included in this particular. We've actually gone out and made temporary repairs on tripping hazards with asphalt, and then when we do a contract like this, then we'll go in and replace that section with where the temporary repairs are.
Right. Councilman Ricks?
I'm fine.
Councilwoman McQuarrie?
I'm fine.
All right. Councilman Les?
I'll echo what the mayor said about, about Sandy Spring Road. I got an earful of that on, at the community garden on Saturday, and, I mean, I never paid attention. But it's my, we don't own all that road yet, do we?
We do not own the road, and, and I'm still working with Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation to, to get them to do some changes or make some agreements to pay for some of the changes, and which prior, and then following that, they would transfer this to the city.
Okay. Let me just ask this question. They put that money away for sidewalks when they build new houses, and my question is, can we ask for some revenue sharing here? It's not just a short piece of sidewalk that's required on that road.
There is a lot of sidewalk required along that road, and I, and I've discussed this, the mayor has, and I have discussed this at length. Part of it has to do with the ownership and the permission from some of the homeowners along that area, and we're still working on it. I have high hopes of getting that completed before the year's up.
Okay. Excellent. And the other thing is, we're still doing a survey of approximately one quarter of the city every year where we walk the sidewalks and figure out what kind of shape they're in.
That is correct. We have, we have additional money in FY 14 for sidewalks in the budget, so after July 1st, we'll have an additional sum of money that we can apply towards concrete. This, this is funding that's completing the funding availability after, out of FY 13.
I'll note for the benefit of our constituents that watch, we don't ask constituents to pay for sidewalks. That's borne by the city. Used to be different, and through the wisdom of the mayor and city council, they decided at some point that that should be part of what is returned to the, to our taxpayers, our citizens, as part of what they pay into the city as far as taxes. So with that, I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Thank you, Councilman Les. Agenda item five is a consideration of bid recommendation for the Armory window replacement project. Stolosky, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for getting this to you late. As you see, I wrote it, wrote this on May 30, but I forgot to hit the send button, so I'm sorry. Sorry about that. This project is the Armory window refurbishment and miscellaneous repairs. Working with KCI Technologies, we prepared specifications for the window work at the Armory. As you know, we have a agreement with the Maryland Historic Trust of Preservation Easement. We cannot just replace the windows. We have to restore them, and that's what we're doing. This work also includes masonry work, lintel repairs, and plaster and carpentry work around the windows. We advertised in the Prince George Sentinel newspaper and the Maryland E-Bid program with the Maryland State Department of General Services. We held a pre-bid meeting on May 2 at the Armory. A number of construction companies came out to take a look at that and walked around the building, and they asked a lot of questions, and we were able to answer them. We showed them the mock window also that was approved by the Maryland Historic Trust, and so they got a good view of what, what kind of work was expected. Bids were opened on May 23 at 1:00 PM, and the bids came in as follows. Colossal Contractors out of Burtonsville, Maryland at $171,730 even. DNA Contractors out of Laurel, Maryland at $245,856.42. Maxmore Hill Restoration Incorporated out of Lithica, Maryland at $249,861. Standard Restoration Waterproofing Company out of Forestville, Maryland at $366,987. JLN Construction Services out of Baltimore, Maryland for $463,082. The Craftsman Group out of Washington, DC for $491,740. Warchester Eisenbrand Incorporated out of Baltimore, Maryland at $580,028. American Architectural Restoration out of Waldorf, Maryland at $705,711.88. A little bit of background here, as you may recall, we've been fortunate enough to get state bond bill funding from way back in 2006. That was approximately, had accumulated to about $780,000. We had to match mostly all of that with cash money, although the last go-around, they did allow us to do a bank statement saying we had money in the bank to match it, so not exactly a dollar-for-dollar match, but it was able to work.
Do a letter of credit or something.
Since then, we've done some projects to draw down on, on that money also. We've done all the roofs in the, in the facility. We've air-conditioned the entire facility, basically, and we've refurbished the one mock window out of that, and then we had engineering costs associated with that, with all that work also. So right now, our current funding levels is at about $915,000 in our CIP account. Recommendation, after reviewing all the three lowest bids with Mr. Manzi and staff, we found out that the lowest bid out from Colossal Contractors was incomplete in the fact that they didn't have a letter of credit or the bid bond as required in the bid. So Mr. Manzi has recommended we throw that, that bid out at this time. The bid submitted by DNA Contractors Incorporated was complete and in order. We've checked their references. They've done a number of jobs for Prince George's County Library, even some work over here at Laurel, and they were very highly recommended. We've checked a couple other references, and maybe two were very good. Therefore, I recommend the mayor and city council approve the proposal supplied by DNA Contractors Incorporated for $245,856.42.
Thank you, Mr. Stolosky. Mayor?
Can I, before you say?
Yes.
I think it's fair to say this is not just the window. I think we need to explain that because?
Right, right. Mayor, so?
For those that may be listening at home and for council, just to make sure, because I know I thought we were talking about just a window, and it's really a whole lot more.
Yeah. So you're right. So inside, if you look at the building, what this contract involves is basically removing the window, the casement windows, and we have about 70 of them to include the gymnasium. They're going to take those out, strip them, strip all the paint off, strip them down, repair any metal problems that they may have, take all the glass out, take all the glazing out, redo all that. Then they're taking the lentils out, which is the steel part above the windows that is keeping the brick up above those windows. So a lot of those have been deteriorating. They're rusting, they're sagging, those type of things. Any brick repair around the window to include mortar. Then you go inside, they'll take care of any drywall issues and window sill issues inside the building, inside those windows. The areas in the gymnasium where we have some plaster problems, that'll be, that's part of this contract also. And the, the old wooden window covers in the gymnasium, they'll be removed, and a mechanical screen will be installed on both sides, and it'll be about a foot or so away from the wall. So we'll be able to hit the button, the curtain will come down, and kids that are throwing balls, the curtain will block the balls from breaking the windows, that type of thing. Raise those up if we just want some sunshine in the building, that type of thing. So, yeah, there is a little bit more involved.
We need a brickwork line and a lintel.
Yeah.
I think it was just the lint out, so.
Oh, and I did forget to mention, Mayor, that they are allowing, they approved a storm window for the inside windows in the office areas. Maryland Historic Trust has, so there will be some energy savings also with particularly the office areas.
Very good. And all of this is from bond bill, state funds?
Right, and matching, matching money too. Yep.
Okay. Councilman Les?
I think the money we expended with KCI and coming up with the spec was well worth it, because I think that's reflected in the total price for the, for the project now.
Yes, sir. Yep, I agree.
And with that, I'm, I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
I am concerned, but not as concerned as I was initially. As I understand it, the windows will be repaired, as you explained, and then they'll allow us to put a second window behind that that will give us the insulation that we need for that building.
Yes, sir. That's correct, yeah.
Okay. That was the thing that was going to concern me. I didn't know whether to replace the glass with an insulated glass or not, but we've got that, so I'm very happy.
Good. Councilwoman McQuarrie?
I'm fine with this.
Right. So we're ready to go with that. Agenda item 110.
Okay. And also, Mr. President, we're not displacing anybody either. We'll still be able to staff the building and we'll work with it. We're thinking July start date, and it's supposed to be 120-day project, so you know how that goes, but, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mayor Moe?
Sorry, I said, the lovely ladies meeting, and I just wanted to, they made a presentation to mayor and council. The lovely ladies, as you know, went to the White House, and the president presented them a National Mentoring Month proclamation, and gave her extras, and told him to, the president told her to give them to those that have helped them get their start and continue to support them, and the lovely ladies wanted to thank the mayor and the council, so I accepted this on our behalf, and told we'd hang it here proudly somewhere in City Hall. The executive was there. They also presented one to, to the executive. Both of us ended up having to leave, and Councilwoman Nicholas is there as well. Just real quickly, we are, where are we at with the field? Did we send that off or not for the emancipation part on the agreement?
They had the agreement.
Okay.
I've not heard back.
Okay. We, we did send the agreement to start moving forward on emancipation part for the library and the other things that we're dealing with there. As you just heard, Christie said has not heard back yet. Their system usually takes a little bit longer. We're sure they're going to come back marked up, and we'll come back to the council on several issues to try to wrap this up and, and get that moving. We did have, did you say anything about tonight? Had the opportunity to talk tonight regarding the bins. Had a couple of those that are currently putting bins around the area, gave us some suggestion. Councilman Les was there as well. Couple, some good solutions. Bob is going to make some changes. We'll come back here. I don't think we're going to be ready to have action on the 10th. I think there's too much discussion. Several things we, you know, we agreed to, several things Mike, still representing council, had some concerns with, and a couple things everybody agreed to. So, you know, I think it's got to come back and have some more, you know, dialogue with the council, and a couple, a couple things need to be cleaned up from the administration standpoint. I don't know if Mike has anything.
Yeah, as the mayor said, June 10 is probably not realistic. So what we, we told the individuals who were going to see us was that be on the work session in July for further discussion with possible action at the next mayor and city council meeting after that. They realize we're going to be at the Maryland女子 league convention at the end of the month. It was a very, very good meeting. I appreciate you setting up the meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you. As some of you may have seen, I tweeted out a, a photo I took of some bulk bins that were in the shopping center where Sam's Club is over the weekend, and there were, apparently the bins were filled, and there were boxes and boxes and boxes of overflow sitting on the ground. You know, that's not the kind of, of thing we want to see in the city. I'm trying, yeah.
I don't think that was something else that was going. Think that was it, those two things.
Okay. Councilman Ricks?
I want to take note of the fact that our purchasing procedures are in effect, and I couldn't be happier. I think it's exactly what we want to see, and I think it gives everybody a fair shake, and I'm very happy. Thank you.
Put, note that in a minute, would you?
I'm happy Mr. Ricks is happy.
Put a big smiley face there, will you? It was something else, but I can't remember. Anything we got?
Take it with you.
Okay. I don't want to hold you all up.
Well, that concludes our agenda. If there's no other business? If there's no other business, the work sessions adjourn.